Alright, so we'll start with our student representatives' presentations tonight. Would you like to begin?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Alright, we have had a lot of events happen in the past month, but first to start us off, we have our sports update. Basketball season is still continuing on, we're headed off to playoff season. The girls' basketball team has won three games and lost sixteen. Boys' basketball, I didn't have the exact statistics for it, but they have been working hard, they've won a decent amount of games, so they're very excited for playoff season. West Wrestling is sending ten sectional qualifiers to sectionals this weekend, I believe it's in Slinger, I'm not positive, but we're very excited. It's a decent amount of kids, and we have gymnastics, and they have been working very hard this season as well. And I don't know exactly when state is, or like when you qualify for state, but they've been winning a lot of their home meets and their dual meets, so it's very exciting to see all their hard work being paid off. Boys' swimming and diving had a very exciting sectional meet. We had one state qualifier, Andrew Growth, in the 200 free and the 500 free, and he ended up winning the 200 freestyle, so he automatically qualified for state. It was really exciting to see that. And then this past week was snow blast week, so this led into our homecoming too. Throughout, we had kind of a weird schedule throughout the week, so during our lunch periods, it was extended so that the snow blast events could occur. There was tug of war, team waistline, so it's like the biggest waist and the smallest waist, with all your teams combined and your teacher. Then here's another picture from tug of war, and they had like kind of like multiple teams competed against each other, and then this was the final, I can go back, but this is on one side with Mr. Peterson, and then this is the other team. So it's very exciting, it kind of gets dangerous after a while. And then the last thing is our sledding, like build your own sled, go down garbage hill, and that is very exciting. Each year it's different, this year we actually had snow, so we were able to use real sleds. Last year we didn't have any snow, so it was kind of like putting bikes down the hill instead. But you're not allowed to use like a legit sled from the store, you have to build your own. So it's really cool to see the different ones. And here's a selfie from Mrs. Cole, this was the team height, so you had to line up with their feet by your neck, and then the tallest team won. So that was really fun. Alright, Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies was recently given thirty thousand dollars in scholarship money to send students abroad. We've done it for the past two years now, we've gotten scholarship money, we've gotten even more now, so more students are able to attend. It's through the CIEE program, there's multiple different countries there, and each country and program that you choose, there's different themes. So there's like a language immersion one, a culture immersion one, we had a girl two years ago go to Africa, and she did a nature one. So it's like they range differently, and it was really exciting to see where they are going. My Fair Lady also happened about three weeks ago, and this was with the West musical, it was really exciting, they had a really good result, the cast was amazing as always, so yeah. And West sent a couple of students to the End Abuse Wisconsin Team Summit, I believe it was this past weekend, and this was just about, they talked about how to have like healthy relationships and end like sexual abuse in teens, the parents were welcome, and the students were really happy to be there. And then we have our own National Merit Scholar finalist, Karli Koons, we are so proud of her, she works so hard every day, and it was really awesome to see that. And then our signing day for University of Wisconsin-Green Bay Division One Soccer, these girls have been teammates for quite some time now, so we are really proud of them as they start their journey together once again at Green Bay. Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies put on a Valentine's Day dance at North with the Special Education Department, and it was really fun to see all the pictures, everyone looked like they had such a good time, they were so happy, they just danced and really enjoyed it. And then today, they had the Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies teamed up with the Special Education Department again, and did the Oshkosh West Winter Olympics 2018 in light of the Winter Olympics occurring. And they had a national anthem sung by Kit, and Katie Rand, she danced for them, the dance team also performed, and then they performed in different events, so it was really fun to see that. Thank you.
That's awesome, you can get pictures from Valentine's Day dance, I couldn't. We did not have as much going on as was, but we still have stuff to update you guys, hon. So on this episode, I'll start off with the musical, it happened this past week, and I went to it and I absolutely loved it, it was hilarious. It was about the Addams Family, and it was kind of a rendition where Wednesday, played by senior Kiana Fiedler, fell in love with a boy, and it kind of tested both families, so it was really funny to watch. Continuing on, our community students are currently partnering with the Oshkosh PD to reduce opioid abuse, and they also have the Eliminate Project, which is a campaign to minimize tetanus in women and children in developing countries. They're having a fundraiser for that, and they're having a spaghetti dinner held at North on February 22nd, so please feel free to come out and support them. And then we have quite a bit going on with our athletics. First, with basketball, we have a really big game this Friday, if you'd like to attend, please go to North and pick up a ticket because they'll probably sell out. It's against Kakana, and it's the fight for the number one spot in the FBA, so please come out and watch.
Is it at North?
Yeah, it's at North. And then for the girls, we just won a game against Kakana, so we hope to do that again on Friday. And the Spartans will also travel to Appleton North to play Lightning on Friday as well. And then with wrestling, they placed seventh at the FBA tourney in Appleton, and then they finished sixth in Slinger. We also had three wrestlers qualify for sectionals, Thomas Urban, Dalton Holmes, and along with sophomore Kate Schmidt, and you can see Thomas pictured to the right. And they will be competing for state on the 17th. And then our dance team went to state on the 3rd, and they were quite excited about that as well, and this is their second year going to state, so it was quite awesome to see them go back to back. Swimming, they just finished up their season this past weekend, they finished 10th out of 11 teams at Nina this past Saturday, and then they finished fourth at the FBA meet on the 3rd as well, and they finished with a 4-3-1 dual meet record. Hockey, the COOP, I'm sorry, the COOP boys hockey team finished their season last night in Bayport, losing 9-1, which was kind of sad, but I was talking to one of the seniors, Hunter Poe, and he said it was just an amazing way to finish out a season without his team, even though he did lose. And the Ice Hawks finished seventh place in the Badgerland Hockey Conference and had an overall record of 4-21. Upcoming, we have sash clash days this upcoming week, and the dance is being run by a rotary team, so that's something new. And then we have our band content coming up, and also the Hall of Fame in March, and so we have a lot to look forward to. So stay tuned and see you next month.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything to report, so we'll jump right to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, this evening's superintendent good news report for February 14th is as follows. It almost bears weighty as opposed to a number of pages, but it is sizable, but we did have a three-week stint here because of how late the second Wednesday of the month is. Creative Franklin Elementary School students in Mrs. Dubert's class gave a presentation about their favorite book, using either a paper presentation or a T-shirt presentation. Students talked about the characters and setting problems in the story in which their parts were, and what was their favorite parts. Carl Traeger Elementary School students recently had a visit from a motivational speaker, Ellie Fit, who provided different lessons for grade levels, kindergarten, first grade. Students learned that each person is special and unique. Second and third graders learned about filling other buckets with notes, and fourth and fifth graders learned about happiness and attitude as they are their church, their own choices each and every day. By the way, Ellie is a former principal of Lord's Elementary School, and Ellie, I believe, works for Verb, and donated her time in that service. The Smith Elementary Schools students love to read, and those who met monthly with Reading Goal could celebrate by choosing a special reading spot, and the school to spend time reading their students' names were also drawn to win water bottles. Smith Elementary students get together once a month to mash up their classes by switching students in grades K through 5. This past month, they've been learning about community as well as the importance of each community member. Reed Elementary students took on the 100 Random Acts of Kindness as a month challenge. For each challenge completed, a class received a kindness award that could be displayed in their classroom, on their classroom door. Some of the acts of kindness include making new friends at recess, setting the table at home for dinner, and writing thank you notes to the custodian at Reed. The Wisconsin Herd, Eddie Harris, provided eighth-grade Webster Stanley student basketball players with a great message about determination, hard work, and priorities. Congratulations to the educators listed in this photo for their most influential educator in their lives of their seniors and the girls' basketball team at Oshkosh. North and Oshkosh West High Schools, they were publicly recognized before the girls' Oshkosh North versus Oshkosh West basketball game. That's a wonderful tradition to recognize educators. South Park Middle School students trivia team placed sixth in the Oshkosh Area School District Foundation's annual trivia contest, and tied for the best costume contest. They dressed as celebrity Wheel of Fortune hosts and guests. Congratulations to South Park Middle School Renetta Hyler, whose poem entitled "You See Animals" has been entered into the Appleley-Published National Spelling Student Poetry Contest, which will be held in 2017 Rising Stars Collection. And field was narrowed to the top 10 in each grade division. Winners have a chance to win anywhere from twenty-five dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. Good luck to Renata. South Park Middle School students celebrated their accomplishments and the Panther Way for their first semester with Greek Week. Students participated in an opening ceremony, played games during their lunch hour where they could earn gold, silver, and bronze medals, as well as points for their teams. The team with the most points at the end of the week was awarded the Greek Week plaque. Tippler and ALPS students celebrated positive behaviors with the Wisconsin Herd basketball game. The day included sideline fun, consisting of VIP seats, high five tunnel, and bench warmers. Eight students from the school were recognized at center court for their outstanding citizenship. Students had a great time. Congratulations to the Tippler and ALPS students who recently received awards for outstanding achievement in academics and citizenship during the second quarter awards assembly on January 24th. Congratulations also to eighth-grade students here at Oshkosh West, eight students at the Oshkosh West Academy for their global studies who were recently enrolled in what has been and awarded travel scholarships, which was noted earlier, had been noted earlier. Some of the students will be able to focus on Spanish immersion learning while others will study children's rights. Jefferson Elementary students recognized their crossing guards during the Crossing Guard Recognition Week in January by providing them with hot cocoa, cupcakes, and cards. They also held a special luncheon where the Safety Patrol students gave a speech on the importance of crossing guards. As a part of the social studies unit on geography and maps, Jefferson Elementary School's first grade students used their compass and cardinal direction skills and math counting skills, as well as newly made pirate hats to follow a treasure map around the school in an effort to locate a hidden treasure chest. Students received goodie bags and enjoyed the fun experience. Oshkosh North's Leadership Two class delivered TED Talks on a variety of topics, they included, they worked on with in the English class to fine tune their talks and then were filmed. These skills will be helpful as students become leaders of tomorrow. Elementary school students experienced learning without limits through the use of the Google Classroom, where assignments were sent to students online, they can collaborate with each other, and to complete the work. WeVideo is used as an electronic book review, and students recording, students voice recording on the book to share it with classmates. Students are also learning using Code.org, well, teachers, computational thinking, some using critical thinking skills, and collaborative and creative, in a creative way. Congratulations to these two students, West seniors Natalie and Tyler Taylor, who signed letters of intent to play in the women's soccer team at UW-Green Bay. Congratulations also to Karli Koons, who was named the Merit National Finalist. Also, sorry, repeat from the rest. And students at Oaklawn Elementary were recently visited by volunteers from FITO Oshkosh, who read to them from books featuring African-American artists and worked on a craft inspired by the book that was read. Oaklawn third-grade students worked hard on, to earn hoops that they could be used towards the goal of camping day in the classroom. Students brought blankets, made forts where they could do their work during the school day. Picture here are Oaklawn students, Oaklawn Elementary Schools in fifth grade recently completed and graduated from the DARE program, which provides them with information and tools to deal with bullying, internet safety, drug violence, and other high-risk circumstances. Communities at Oshkosh North High Schools, third annual spaghetti dinner was noted earlier, is coming up on February 22nd, and is being used as a fundraiser and a reminder that $10 ticket will get you a wonderful spaghetti dinner, and you'll support a worthy cause. First-grade students at Shapiro STEM Academy held an author celebration where they were able to reverse and edit their information books and share them with a captive audience. Fourth-grade students learned how difficult life would be without the use of thumbs and made robot fingers, which include paper bones and string tendons. Second-grade students were busy creating dreamland maps for Merlin, the musician, and using the imagination and creativity to incorporate geography. We're really going interesting ways at STEM Academy. And through the financial support of SOAR grant, Jefferson PTO Jefferson Elementary School hosted opera for the young, "Mermaid's Tale" for the theme. Students in grades three and four performed "The Creatures of the Reef," and the story helped students learn about and understanding acceptance and differences. And thank you to the ALPS Club of Oshkosh for donating their time and purchasing new books for the library at Roosevelt Elementary School, they were so very appreciated. And last, you'll find a list of activities and events attended by the superintendent in the last three-week period. With that completes the superintendent's report for this evening, February 14th.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, do we have other reports by committee chairs?
Yep. The Education Committee met on Thursday, February 1st at 8:30 in the morning. We began the meeting with an update on our Partners at Learning Program, which is a program with the Oshkosh Area School District, and that is supported by the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. We received an updated document listing the PALS schools as of 1/31. There are currently two openings for PALS, one at Carl Traeger and one at E. Cook. We also were provided a more detailed document that listed the activities that take place as a result of the partnerships. A suggestion was made to reach out to a broader range of organizations. The committee brainstormed some companies that are not on the list and might be considered potential PALS. We also discussed having a roundtable brainstorming session at some point to share what is happening across PALS at various schools. Julie Conrad joined us and also helped discuss the enrollment process for charters and programs in the district. Specifically, she wanted to let us know the difference between charter schools versus programs. And a charter school has an agreement that is board-approved, and specific required criteria must be met for a student to enroll, including academic proficiency. Therefore, students could be refused admission at a charter school, but the remainder of the programs in the district, such as communities and the Global Academy, do not have required criteria for enrollment. Instead, there are a set number of seats available, and students apply by certain deadline to be part of the program. If there are a large number of students who apply, names are placed into a lottery, and students are chosen from that lottery. A waiting list is created from there. Students go through the application process to determine if it is a right fit, and not as a way to exclude students. We did discuss some of the requirements for the Global Academy program, and Julie's going to be looking into some things there and reporting back to the committee. We also set some future agenda meeting items. It was requested that we review our K-12 vision for literacy, specifically how we address dyslexia, and how we might adjust literacy programs for students that do not fit the traditional reading program. We also asked for a science field test update from Julie Conrad, and a literacy survey information update from Kim Brown. And we adjourned at 9:17 a.m. Our next meeting is March 3rd, 1st, at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other chairs? No. Okay, great. Then we'll move right into our workshops. Number one, high school graduation preparation.
Good evening, we're excited to be able to share with you a little update about graduation. Very first thing is just to know how graduation has happened in the past, and I think most of you know, because you've been there. Graduation has been held at the North Fieldhouse for the last few years, and CULF Center has been used for Oshkosh West. But there have been some changes, which could be opportunities. So the first thing we learned is that CULF was no longer able to hold us during that, have that weekend open to us, and so we looked at that as, okay, so what could be the opportunity next? And so we met with Mike Cluff, who is the Director of Operations at Menominee Arena, and he shared with us that that was definitely a possibility with us, and has been very generous partner. And so we are going to have graduation there. The other reason that we held that was Oshkosh North, I don't know how much you want to say, but there was a change in bleachers and...
Yeah, so at North, we've had it there since the entirety of Oshkosh North. So it was a huge tradition, it was a big consideration for us whether or not we leave it there, because it is something that we have taken so much pride in having in the building. With that, when we had new bleachers put in, we lost about 350 seats, and then when we moved to graduation to a weekend, we had a major increase in attendance, and with those two things, we just didn't have the room. Last year, we had to livestream it in the auditorium, and that was filled, and there are some different fire safety concerns with just crowding of entrances and exits. So just for overall, being able to house everyone that we want and not have to worry about, do we start going down the ticket route, and only limit how many family members students can bring, that's what kind of forced our hand at Oshkosh North to stop a long-term tradition and start a new one.
And so you can see some of the great highlights here, there is a 5,000-person capacity at the Menominee Arena, including the floor space, but what many people are going to be excited about is it's air-conditioned.
That's nice.
It has a great sound system, there's going to be a Jumbotron, so people, no matter where you're sitting, you will be able to see the students crossing the stage, which is exciting. 580 parking stalls, we realized that there is going to be some parking on streets, but we're recommending that our families are dropping off their students so that we don't have every student driving as well. And not only all of that, but the Menominee Arena was very generous in what they're charging us, they are looking at us as a partner, and so it's actually costing us less than it did for Oshkosh West to hold it at CULF Center in the past, so it's been pretty great.
Awesome.
I should note before we leave graduation, and as we approach the end of six years of my experience here, on my first interview by the school board back in May of 2012, I was told what I needed to do was find a way to avoid having overheated graduations at CULF. It took six years to accomplish that, but this was an opportunity that before this building was built, I talked to the leadership of building it and saying, could we consider graduation? I know you're going to have an arena that is air-conditioned, could we get in on the ground floor of potentially hosting it there? And so the first time, we have guaranteed appropriate seating, but we also have air-conditioning no matter what the temperatures are outside.
And the beautiful thing about holding it on a Sunday is not only do we not have to worry about our students who possibly are in sports on that Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, but it also happens to be a day that's not going to be as busy for the Menominee Arena, so that is a great thing for all of us. So graduation will be on Sunday, June 3rd. Oshkosh West will be at noon this year, and Oshkosh North will be at 3:30. We spread that out so that there would be enough time for people to take pictures and parking lots to empty before the other ones began. And then next year, it'll flip-flop, which you'll see in the calendar, with Oshkosh North at noon and Oshkosh West at 3:30.
One quick question, is there going to be any auxiliary police helping out with the transition of parking in the area, much similar to what there is now during the basketball games?
We've always at, I'm sorry, we've always at West worked with auxiliary police, and of course, the university police, which we wouldn't have in this situation. So we invite them into our graduation meetings that we have scheduled now for the spring, so they will be part of that conversation, and then it's up to them to kind of determine what resources they feel they need to put into the ceremonies.
Are we going to have the names up in a marquee, flashing off for...
I don't know, we have not talked about that.
That'd be a good thing to do. And I think what's special going to help North is that it's green seats, so that's...
Or some strategy there. We weren't going to ruin tradition and go to some other color.
Go Packers!
Just remember, blue and yellow make...
Green.
My concern would be with parking. Those of us who attended the Turkey Trot, which was, we weren't in the actual arena, but it was held, or started on those grounds, there were people parked all the way on 11th Street and some of the other numbered streets to Oregon. There was an event at the arena, I think it was January 1st, people were parked beyond Jefferson School. So encouragement of carpooling, or people walking, or bringing bicycles, I don't know if there are bicycle racks there or not, but parking, I think, is going to be a significant issue.
We've already been communicating with our families about that, and again, encouraging, instead of the students driving their cars and then the families driving their cars, come together, we're actually asking the students to report a lot closer to... We're actually asking the students to report a lot closer to the start time than we used to. We used to have them arriving a lot earlier. So, we're really trying to communicate out to their seniors and their families, come with your family, have your family drop you off and then go park. And, you know, for families that have guests coming to carpool as much as possible, so.
And at both, both at CULF and as well as North, we had significant parking overflow that occurred from parking lots as well into the neighborhood. And for those of us who needed to rush between the two graduations, we always were protected by a little reserves parking. But in this case, those of us involved directly in the graduation just can hang out there between the two graduations and plan on being there from well before noon until after 5:00.
Exciting.
Parking is always an issue at the university for those of us who live there on a daily basis. However, there are numerous lots to choose from, plus there's a parking ramp and then there's a shuttle service from people who remember the old Cub Foods on the other side of the river with a shuttle service. So, I'm just concerned about parking. I'll just leave it at that. But it sounds like you're addressing that and hopefully, everything will be fine. I think the venue is terrific. Thank you.
Could you guys have a shuttle service? I was, you were saying?
We talked about that, you know, do we look at?
If we can identify means of dealing with that, we could certainly work on trying to get a shuttle service from a remote lot. We just have to get permission from a lot. I think it would not be wise to have as far away as North High School's parking lot, but potentially parking at West or downtown.
Yeah, at Lake Air.
Downtown.
Yeah, at Lake Air or even like Commute Convention Center.
We have, we have talked about that a little bit. It's just so hard to know if it's going to be an issue or not.
Right.
Anytime you do something for the first time, you always figure out what went well, what didn't go well, what were the challenges, so.
And our principals have had our band orchestra present at the school, at the site, at the Menominee Arena. We've explored that and the sound is fantastic for those of you who have attended any performance or any activity there. Hearing will not be an issue.
The other great thing about the arena compared to CULF is if you've been to a graduation at CULF, the audience seems so far away from the stage and so far removed and the people way at the back. Could hardly hear a band and our choir. And so, this is a little bit more up close and personal and the Jumbotron makes that even more so. So, we're really excited about it being a little bit more of a, we feel like we're all in this together, so.
It's going to be great.
It really makes them feel like they're really the stars of the show, you know, because the family is right there on top. So, it's very cool. It's a cool arena to do anything in.
And having experienced three graduations in one day with, in three high school districts in a basketball arena, it is, it is very, back in Minnesota, it is a very workable situation. And having the space we have between the two graduations creates enough for clearing out and creates a wonderful atmosphere there. And we are very grateful to the folks at Menominee Arena because we are ending up with a wonderful bargain. They're not charging anything at a standard rate. And two graduations for less than the cost of one in the past. So, that's fabulous.
That's a perfect segue, Mr. Mc. I want to commend you for jumping on that opportunity right away and our staff for, I mean, sort of a moment in Oshkosh history, right? I'm not especially a basketball fan, but it's a very hopeful moment and to seize that and be right in that is absolutely the right thing to do. So, thank you.
One of the things you noted in the Good News Report, the partnership, one of the things I, once Oshkosh was selected as the home of what is now named The Herd, was not named at that time, I had discussions with the folks from the Milwaukee Bucks about the lack of involvement in the community. I was used to having much more engagement with students and partnership and they really are fulfilling my request to become engaged with us and that if they want to develop a fan base and they want to celebrate in a healthy activity of basketball, engage and be a party to our community. And they are fulfilling everything I ask of them as to being partners with. If it comes to the community to simply ignore and not engage our elementary and middle school students is simply a waste and they have truly reached out to us and we really appreciate their partnership in many ways.
Yep. And speaking of that, coming soon to elementary schools near us, The Herd is working with us on a reading program. So, coming soon, more information.
So, it's a, it's a great addition to the community and another wonderful reason that 2017 has become a wonderful year for Oshkosh in having both the efforts of The Herd and the arena and certainly Oshkosh Corporation.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Kim is going to switch off the slideshow and so.
And then, we're going to do the proposed 2018 and 19 district calendar. And we're just going to take it month by month for you. So, if you have questions in any particular month, feel free to stop us and chat. So, school is going to begin. We have August 22nd. That's new professional training days, so that's when our new teachers join us. We do a new teacher academy. Special Ed has an academy to help all of our special ed teachers. Then, of course, there's the whole payroll business office piece. So, and it's about three days for our new teachers joining us, but it's a good celebration. And all of our administrators have come every year to clap in all of our new employees. So, it's a great way to welcome all of our, our new people. Then you can see on August 27th, we have August Convocation and then we have professional development and staff meetings throughout that whole week.
Also, as a reminder in here that by state law, we have to start either on September 1st or after Labor Day. And September 1st happens to be on the weekend, so we are starting after Labor Day.
Okay. And then, you can see where our early release days are. Our first one is on September 19th. In October, we have early release on October 10th. October, and this is where there was a change. If you saw, the calendar went out again today. I didn't realize until we met with the OEA last night that we had two middle school fall PT conferences. One of those were supposed to be high school. So, October 18th is the middle school fall parent-teacher conference and then October 22nd is the high school fall parent-teacher conference. And we do that purposely so parents who have students who are in elementary, middle, and high school are not feeling like they have to get everywhere in one single night. And then, traditionally, October 26th has been off and that allows our art, music, and FIAE teachers, there's some national conferences that are going on that they, or state conferences that they participate in.
In addition to that, a few years ago, we did not have a three-day weekend in October and we learned very quickly from our students and our staff that having that break at that time comes, is, is a great refresher at that, at that point in the fall.
Okay, so you can see in November, we have our end of first quarter. Early release is on November 14th. November 16th, no school for students and for elementary, middle, and high school. We do have conferences in the AM. And then, of course, Thanksgiving break. In December, we have an early release day and then, of course, our winter break. January, no school on January 1st, New Year's. Early release on January 9th. You can see where end of semester is. And then, January 21st is the day that we were telling you about where we are meeting or working with CISA 6 and the first organization to bring in national speakers. And so, they will be here in Oshkosh, will be one of the hubs and we will have professional development throughout that full day. February 13th, early release. February 18th, no school. So, that will, and it'll be Professional Development Day in the AM and the PM. And then, of course, our juniors only at high school will be taking the ACT on February 20th and 21st.
That's the same as it's been for the past few years?
This is, it ended up, this is where spring break was this past year, but we are keeping it this last week for a few reasons. If we would have gone with the traditional time of where we've had spring break in the past, it actually interferes, it's right in the middle of testing. And so, then, we don't know if we would have been able to get all the testing in if a student was absent. The other beautiful piece of this is we also realize that we have a very diverse community. And so, we think this is a good thing to maybe have spring break at a different time than the traditional Easter. April 10th, early release. And then, we still have April 19th off as no school. And then, May 8th is early release. May 27th, Memorial Day. And then, we go into June. You can see that next year's graduation will be on June 2nd. And as we said, we are flipping North and West graduation. And then, you can see the snow makeup day number three, half-day record-keeping. You'll notice that we did not have snow makeup day one or two and that is because.
As we worked with the calendar committee, it is, and we're asked by parents and our staff all the time, why do we go so late into June? And so, we've been exploring different ways that we can condense the calendar and still meet the 180 student contact days as well as the instructional minutes. And as we started to work with other school districts, we found that they are able to absorb their snow days. They didn't have built-in snow days or actual days in the calendar. Where they absorb that in is within their instructional minutes. And so, we started to take a look at that for the Oshkosh area school district. So, I'll show you in just a second the instructional minutes that we can absorb. So, if we have an inclement weather day, we can absorb those instructional minutes because we're over the, the state requirement. So, by doing that, we have condensed down the calendar by two school days. However, if we go to a third inclement weather day or a third snow day, then we are going to have to go to school June 10th if we perhaps had a fourth day. It hasn't happened in a while, but we would, we would just tack on days at the end of the school year. And, and other districts in the state or in our region would also be in the same, in the same shape if, if that would happen with inclement weather days. The other thing is, is we worked with this calendar, we had a great group of individuals from our NTA group, our OEA group, administrators worked with us and we met five times, four to five times and, and really talking about what are ways that we can organize the calendar. A lot of their suggestions are represented here. And also, another suggestion that they made and we got feedback from parents is that we've changed, we've changed back to the other format on the calendar in order to make it easier to read. So, let's talk a little bit more about those instructional minutes. So, on this chart up here, you can see by level, there is the first column that says total, second column, total hours required. This is the number of hours required by the Department of Public Instruction that we held for instruction. So, there's so many student contact days that we need to have and we need to have so many instructional hours or instructional minutes. This is the required in the second column. As you move to right, this is at the top there, the total Oshkosh area school district hours. So, for elementary, we are this school year with the added minutes, and if you know from last school year, we added 15 minutes onto the elementary school day. We are at 1,091 hours. At middle school, we're at 1,249 hours. And you may be going, how come middle school has so many hours? Okay, there's two different reasons here, because I knew this was going to be a question, is that at middle school, middle school starts at 8:19 and is dismissed at 3:37. So, compared to the high school, even though that they're seeing total hours required, compared to the high school, there is 11 additional minutes per day times 180 days. That adds up to a lot of hours. In addition to that, elementary and middle schools can count recess time as some of your instructional minutes because they, because it's, it's just built in there that students need time or activity. And middle school has their recess time up against as in part of their lunch. And so, there's some minutes that are also counted within the middle school day as instructional minutes. So, that's why the plethora of hours compared to the other levels. With high school this year, we're at 1,142 hours, which is less than one day. And thus, the reason we had to make up the bomb threat time at Oshkosh West High School because really, we're only able to absorb a four-hour delay at the high school level. So, in order to be able to incorporate those two snow days, elementary can absorb those, middle school can absolutely absorb them, the high school cannot. And so, to be able to do this calendar, what we're, what we have built in here is the high school would add three additional minutes per day. And we're not exactly sure where that's going to be. More than likely, it's going to have to be on the end of the day in order to have the busing runs be, having enough gap in time for the bus to do the elementary students and then to do the secondary students. But by adding three additional minutes per day, we, we go to 1,150 hours, which gives us exactly two days. So, with a little, well, actually, there's like 20-minute little cushion there, but essentially, we get that, we get the two days, we get the two days out of that. We felt like three minutes was doable and, and absorbable. Going beyond that, if we wanted to absorb more instructional time, we could do that. But looking at currently the structure of the high school day, it doesn't really seem feasible. So, this is where we're going to start.
I note that we are going to do a survey next year to our families and to our staff to see what, if, how spring break is going at that mid-year time. So, that is something that we're going to do next year. But we felt like it was important for people to try it out in order to know what that, well, that and it didn't, it truly did not work in the calendar for this year, but we wanted to see what people's reactions were.
Good. So. So, questions?
And just for a reminder, the snow has fallen on weekends and no ice and no fog. We have yet to consume a school closing date thus far. So, when it snows on the weekend, the city of Oshkosh is shaken because it's overtime and driving, snow plows. But I celebrate the fact that we do.
We have school.
So, we have school.
Another day that we were very purposeful on is Martin Luther King Day. That's a professional development day so that students would be home to celebrate Martin Luther King, but we can still have professional development, so.
Do we have any questions?
I just have one quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you that the, well, even though it was not intentional, but the fact that the spring break falls on the same week as the UWO spring break is making a lot of people happy. As you know, there was a contingency at UWO in the faculty senate led by Carl Lowenstein trying to get these dates to match up for years now. So, this makes a lot of people very happy, including myself, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Request for future agenda items. Anyone?
Excuse me. We, we need to schedule our annual board self-evaluation and forms were distributed to each of you at the end of, actually, we probably should have given them to these ladies too. They were distributed at the end of January. I think we asked for a due date of February 7th, which would give plenty of time for the data to be tabulated and knowing that the board was going to have extra meetings in the month of, of February, that that would get those, those taken care of. So, if you haven't turned those in, please do so. If somehow, they took on legs and they've disappeared, let me know. I have some extra ones.
Thank you. Any other requests for future agenda items?
What's that? I thought that was approved or that the date was suggested to us.
Talking about the questionnaire.
It was electronic, though, correct?
I thought we had a date too, Mr. Preschel, but I didn't see it on the calendar.
That's the truth.
I thought it was March.
It was March.
Well, we'll nail that down. We don't have to do that right now. Okay.
That's 13th.
Yeah, March 13th.
Oh, a special date then, yeah.
Okay. So, we're good there. Thank you. Anything else? Announcements? All right. Then, we get to adjourn to executive session. For the purposes of considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public, public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, 19.851(c) Wisconsin statutes, A, consider, consider a pending personnel matter. And number two, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons, 19.851(c) Wisconsin statutes, A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engage in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others and engage in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, 120.131(c) Wisconsin statutes. B, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engage in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, 120.131(c) Wisconsin statutes.
120.131(c) Wisconsin statutes. C, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engage in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, engage in conduct which endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee, a school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled, and engage in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, 120.13(c) Wisconsin statutes. And D, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engage in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, engage in conduct which endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee, a school board member of the school district in which the employee is enrolled, and engage in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, 120.13(c) Wisconsin statutes.
So, move. Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Berger, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Pla, aye. Olston?
Aye.
Olston, aye. Pashal?
Aye.
Pashal, aye. Motion three.
Okay. I think we're going to the ayes to.